Very good. It is part of new business tonight. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve, or the board appoint Frank Albert as chairperson for the following year, and Reagan Elliott as vice chair for the following year.
I'd make those two separate motions, Mr.
Why don't I start with Frank Albert for chairperson for 2025, 2026?
Second the motion?
Thank you.
That's a third.
We should call the roll.
I am out the current chair. The chair should call the roll.
How do we get, how do we get to appoint a chair?
Would you like to call the vote, Mr. Cowley?
No.
To call the vote?
Call the vote. I think perhaps it's land use administrator for the town, Mark. You could start the ball rolling here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You, you, no, you, you cannot. Only, only appointed members at the moment can.
So, we have a forum. I apologize, Steve. I should have, the first order of business should have, should have been to appoint you as an active member tonight where we don't have a full board, which I'll follow up on in just a second.
Okay. Would you like to rescind your vote until you have, can appoint an alternate?
Okay, I'll put that in advance and make a motion that Steve Hamilton as a board alternate, newly appointed board alternate, serve as a member of the voting board tonight. And, I'm sorry, I haven't met you, Mindy, correct? And I won't do in the, Steve has been on the planning board for what in number of years? Maybe on the Board of Adjustment prior to. So just give you a little time to see how things operate. So now I'll.
Now, you, you made a duly made a motion. Now we need a second to that motion.
For Steve to.
Correct.
Be a voting member this evening.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Any, any nays?
And I'll make a motion that we appoint Reagan Elliott as vice chair for the following 2025, 2026 election year.
I'll second the motion.
You know, rolls, he might as well be gone.
Yeah, just like going through my head. I'm like, alright, she's not here, so, yep.
You still, you can.
Yep.
Yeah, she, she did have a medical situation rose today that just prevented her from coming. She wrote saying that she hopes she could be here, but because of the length of time she was with the doctor, apparently she couldn't make it. But she plans to be a regular attending member.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That looks unanimous. We still have a motion on the floor for chair, which never got duly voted on.
Okay, well, I'll like, I said it was in advance, I'll pull it out of advance and restate it that the board appoint Frank Albert as chair for the following election year.
Does your second still stand?
My second still stands.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. Against her, I apologize.
If you would continue for me, just till I get adjusted, just being thrown in the chair.
Okay, sure.
This very second.
Yeah, we, we can do that. There is another agenda item. New member introductions. Maybe we can go around the table and introduce ourselves? And new members can introduce themselves as well.
Steve Hamilton, alternate.
London Orde, alternate.
Waymore, member.
Mark Kennedy, land use administrator.
Doug Cowley, member. Bruce Stevens, member.
Frank Albert, Frank Albert, I guess, the new chair.
Well, I guess you are.
I would like to remind members, new and old, that the microphone does not really work unless you're about eight inches from it. So if I'm looking at you and I'm pointing at the microphone, that's what I'm indicating to you. Because when you start doing this, nobody, nobody can, nobody can hear you, especially the people at home. Next up on the agenda, we have Kim and Tom Oliver of 20 Glant Drive. A variance is requested from Article 300.002.006.007 of the zoning ordinance to grant a building permit for a 22 by 40 garage within a 25 side setback requirement. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about your application.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kim. Tom. Hi, Kim and Tom. Thanks for all being here. Congratulations on your new positions. We, we moved in about a year and a half ago and knew that when we moved in, we wanted to build a detached garage, not realizing how close we were, property line was in question. Got a survey and here we are today. We, we're hoping to get a garage in this location. As you can see, a lot of our yard is, is taken up with trees and, and the pool is off to the left. We're hoping to make this our forever home and we have grandchildren that come over and, and friends and we all enjoy the backyard. And we, we feel like the, the five questions we need to answer, just trying to make this quick, I realize, I feel like the first four we're good with. Number five, I understand is an issue, I think five. As far as the, the ability to locate it somewhere else, I understand that we can put it further back in the yard. But what that does is, I did send some pictures. I know you came by today. Thank you.
Yes, I did get a chance to, I, I did get a chance to go over and met Tom and we took a walk out so I could see it. I think some of your pictures are pretty, pretty darn good. And the terrain there is essentially flat. I mean, maybe 5% grade from the house back to the, that property line.
Correct.
But it's, but it's fairly level.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I won't comment anymore at this point. I'll let you finish your.
Okay.
Your application.
Yeah, so our hope is just to, you know, the garage will partially be used for parking vehicles. So the distance to the house is a factor, you know, as we get older, the safety of walking to and from the house in the winter. As well as, you know, we want to make the backyard like a garden oasis type setting with less impact, you know, on the environment, but, you know, aesthetically and if, if you look, for example, if you look at our neighbor's yard across the street, he, he was unable to get a variance. And if you look at his yard, his backyard is a parking lot. And we don't want that, you know, we want less pavement. We want it to be closer to the home and look nicer and have less impact and of course cost less. I know that's not a factor to you all, but it is to us.
On a big driveway.
Yeah. So I don't know what else to say.
Do you want me to bring up some pictures for you?
Sure, yeah. So, on the right side is the neighbor's fence, which goes all along the three feet. In the back part of the fence, it's three feet from the property line. And then on the plan, you'll see the fence, well, it's, it's kind of wonky the way the fence is and the property line is, but you can't really see it, but I did put a, some flagging tape to where the front of the garage would be. Yeah. So that would be the front and going to the left would be the back. As proposed in this picture and this plan. So as you can see, it's, it's already pretty far away. And we attempted to, to kind of compromise and only have a portion of it in the setback. Because you can see most of the garage is beyond the 25 feet setback. Ideally, we'd love to have it right next to the, the house, you know, right up close. And if we were to push it way back to where we could put it, right to the tree line, it would be a significant distance back.
I have one more picture. There were four altogether.
And that's actually from the back of the property and you can see our abutters, their houses on the left. And that's their fence and the property line is three feet to the right. That.
So this right here would be the property line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think, Tom, you said that stake, that black stake there was your.
That's the property line, yep. We just had it surveyed fairly recently. Because there wasn't actually a survey before.
But there was a survey, a recorded survey at registry when the subdivision was laid out, you know, in the last 20 years.
Microphone, Mr. Stevens.
I was just gonna comment that.
I heard him fine.
I was just gonna comment that the, that that property is surveyed. There is a registered and recorded survey at the registered deeds, registry of deeds, which was filed there about 20 years ago when the subdivision was approved.
Right.
So there is a registered survey. I mean, this is fine to have.
Well, as far as any files that we saw before we bought the home, there was only a septic plan and a proposed subdivision plan. So we never saw an actual planned plan, which actually conflicts with what the real property line is.
If you want to get an official, official recorded copy, if you just go to register deeds for three bucks, you can get a copy of that.
Thanks.
This served very well for the purposes of illustration, I must say.
Thank you.
You did a good job on it.
Is it pretty drawing?
No, I mean, for, for variance, someone seeking.
Color coded.
Yeah, no, I mean, for someone seeking a variance like yourself, I thought it was very impressive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Board discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just comment, I've, I've been associated with the CBA or the planning boards continually since 1978, when I first got on. And at that time, the provision or the requirement for the 25-foot side yard setback was in effect then. And that's one of the very few ordinances in town that's had no mitigation or remediation, you know, since the 70s. And it seems to be one of the most important tenants of Brentwood citizens when we do community surveys, about what they like about Brentwood, why they came to Brentwood. It's for that spatial ability to have a wood-sized lot and to, you know, be, have some protection from neighboring properties. You know, protection, not necessarily a bad word, but just some space. And I said to Tom, back in the 11th grade, my 11th grade English teacher at Exeter High School made us recite the Frost poem about good fences make good neighbors, the Robert Frost poem. And honestly, that pretty much sums up the thought process, the philosophy of the majority of citizens who voted for this part of the ordinance to be put into effect. Because the planning board doesn't make any ordinances or regulations. All of them have to go before the vote of the general town meeting for adoption. So we are tasked, you know, through the RSA, the state enabling legislation that allows, gives the zoning board of adjustment authority to review requests for variances or special exceptions, gives us that power, but it puts a list of, names five criteria that have to be met in a positive sense before the board can, before the board has the authority to grant the variance. So it's important that, you know, we follow, we operate under mandate from the state. And if we don't follow that mandate, then an abutter or anyone in town can go to Superior Court and contest it and say, we're not abiding by state law. Simple as that is. And it's always tough when people come in and, you know, have a legitimate use of their property, but maybe they can, they certainly can have, in your case, you can have what you want to have. It just has to be in conformance with the, with the zoning ordinance. And I think Mr. Greenwood's comment letter, which you have a copy of. I could read this into the record, or I think all members have it. They want me to read the paragraph, I'll read the paragraph. So, so I will, just for, for everybody and anybody listening at home. So this is from Glenn Greenwood, Brentwood Town Planner, dated April 9th, 2025. And he says, the subject is Oliver variance request. And he writes, the Oliver's on Glant Drive are requesting variance from Article 3, Section 300.002.006.00. In order to construct a new garage within the required 25-feet setback side property line, the applicant has provided both a narrative response for the five variance criteria and a graphic display, and a graphic displaying their request. As depicted on their plot plan, the proposed garage will encroach 10 feet into the sideline setback and includes about 25% of the proposed garage being in the, in the setback. It seems obvious that, obvious that the property has ample area within which the garage, the results and, and no encroachment within the side setback. The applicant should construct a new garage outside of the side yard setback. And again, that's his opinion based on our town ordinances and what is, what has been granted, the authority that has been granted to us by the state legislature to review and subsequently vote on these applications. And of course, that's, that's just one of five of the variance criteria, but I think that's the most essential one. And I don't, I will let other members comment, but I, I don't see how, unless we can get by that, reasoning for, you know, not considering that part of it, how we could approve a variance just by matter of law.
I have, I have a question.
Certainly.
How far would you have to move that garage, either back or this way, in order to get it to, out of that, get out of that 25-foot?
I know, further back, it would be roughly 30 feet, 30.
So additional 30 feet to whatever it is right now?
Mm-hmm. I don't know sideways, because we have, I didn't, we wouldn't put it to the side. Because we have the gazebo and that's, I mean, that's a permanent structure with a cement slab and.
Okay.
And a tree and.
So you'd have to go 30 feet back to get back there, 30 feet to go back?
Yeah.
And just a question here, I guess, you can't, putting it on the other side is not an option, I guess?
On the other side of the property?
On the other side, whether you have this, this walkway and whatnot? Existing dwelling, it's like, will you go in the front, in front of your house?
That would probably encroach in the front setback of 75 foot.
The same thing, okay. All right.
I, I think, Steve, if you're looking at the diagram here, they'd only have to move that away from the property line 10 feet, because they're already 15 feet, the proposed drawing here is 15 feet from the abutters property line.
Right, that's, that's what I was thinking. Either go that way or come this way.
They, they need to come in a little bit, 10 feet, just 10 feet.
Right.
And then go back a little ways.
Right.
To the rear of the property.
That's what I'm thinking, okay. And you don't want to, you don't want to, like, slide it over by, past the gazebo there? I mean, it looks like you've got plenty of room to get it in there.
If you're going down the driveway and the house is here.
Yeah.
And you move the garage over here, and then there's a gazebo in front of it, you'd have to, still have to push it way back to even be able to get into the garage. And then it, then it's in the center of the yard, which is where my family and friends, that's our backyard. So we would only go straight back if we had to do anything. We wouldn't go to the side. Do you know what I mean? You can't really enter into the garage if you moved it in front of, in back of the gazebo and.
I don't, so that's the distance from the gazebo is greater than the distance you'd have to move it that Bruce is talking about? If you were to move it towards the birch tree and the gazebo, you couldn't? I guess I'm not understanding why you can't go.
Sideways?
Back, or it says, see, it says garage center line? Even if you were like, slide it down a little bit, you're past the gazebo, you're clear of all the spaces there. I mean, your driveway would not be straight, you'd have a little arc to your driveway, but what's the issue with that, I guess, I'd have to ask?
Well, the garage door would be in the front, so how would we get in the garage door if the gazebo's in front of it?
I'm sorry, I, I missed that. What's, what do you, how would you get what?
In the garage, if it's in front of the gazebo.
No, I didn't say get it in front. I said you gotta move it back a little bit.
Yep.
And then down, so it's gonna come in a curve. It's gonna, it's not gonna be behind the gazebo, won't be blocking the entrance to the garage. You just have to give the garage a little, a little turn there. And as a result, you're probably, your driveway's gonna take a little bit of a turn. But you, it just seems like you have plenty of room back there.
Well, it's, it's a 40-foot long garage, then it would, it would be in the middle of the yard, the backyard.
Well.
If you move it over.
Sometimes you, you know, your, the property is limiting in terms of what you can put on it. I mean, 20 by 40 is a big garage, nice garage, certainly.
Well, we'd still have to add a lot more pavement if we hadn't moved it over.
And then you, you've probably read, in fact, I said to Tom, I'd be happy to give you this, this is the state law on the ZBA. And I'd be happy to have you take that for a week or two and copy it. You can probably go online and get a copy of it.
I've looked at it.
And read that. And you'll, you'll see what the restraints on the town are, what the requirements of the town board is to grant something.
Yeah.
And this just.
I, I understand the laws. I just, you know, if the zoning hasn't been updated since the 70s and, you know, we're environmentally conscious and we're more about less impact and cluster zoning and, you know, green space and, you know, for trying to do less pavement, you know, it just, to me, you know, when does it start making sense? I mean, I get you're gonna follow the laws. We're here for a variance, because I know we're not allowed to do it.
It is an old law, but I, I maintain that it's something that the townspeople hold very dearly, the provisions of that setback requirement. And it's tough, it's tough for the board members to sit here. As I told Tom, we're not a good old boy board where we just say, well, you know, you guys are nice people and you're addition, good positive addition to town. And so, yeah, you can do that. It's just not, not in the authority of the ZBA to, to do that, in my opinion. But I'm just one opinion.
Well, we thought we'd give it a shot.
Certainly.
Absolutely, absolutely. Maybe we should move on to public comment, if we could. Sybil? Do, do you have a public comment that you'd like to make? Just come, Sybil, come right up to this microphone. You're perfectly fine, you're perfectly fine. Yep, adjust that. There you go. Absolutely. Is the green light on the top of the microphone still on? Right top? Is it on, Doug? Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I just want, I just. My objection to the law is nothing to do with that. You know, before I moved in, there were, there were a lot of trees. And then you still look in our house, you still look into the woods. And my fence ended up, and it ended up, because it was always trees there. And we tried to make a straight line in the tree and cut off the tree. And fences became very, hard to design. And at some point, we went to moving the fence back, where it could say it offered to plant a whole bunch of stuff around the fence, so they wouldn't see the fence. Why the property? And that kind of ended the conversation. The other point is, we actually made a point about not having two acres of land. Nobody don't do much that. Most of the, most of the acreage. They're not having two acres. I can read what I wrote, but I don't think it's.
I think all the board members have read it. I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak, and this is a public event, public hearing held in public, and the public has the right to speak. And I wanted to give you that opportunity.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any trouble with that, you know, what I said.
No?
You know, and I, I put like fence in. They had these. The fence people, and they, they went like, over the property line. And the neighbor, who was, who was, you know, the honest, how do you get the same? So she knew where the line was. And within several days, somebody just managed it, and it was, and they moved it there. So knowing when the property line was, knowing where it was, was, was hard to find. Figuring out where it was.
Thank you so much. Any board members have any questions?
They don't make, they don't make a lot too many, that's for sure. You know, I have, my granddaughter, she plays in the yard. Just from what I see from the yard, you know, they're like in and out all the time. And if that's what all of the parkerages, doesn't bother me. Because of power tools, all the kind of things, constructing, building, and 10 feet back, and it's 10 feet less noise.
Board members have any questions or comments?
I just like to ask a question for, for the record. You, the board will retain copies of all the applicant's information and the abutters information.
It's in my file.
In your file.
And it is public record, yes.
I just want to say, you know, your backyard is beautiful. It's probably one of the most beautiful backyards in Brentwood.
Thank you.
And it's.
Thank you so much for your comment. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Sybil.
I think we should move on to the five criteria, and we'll just start with number one. In your packet, you will find a sheet from NHMA. Basically, I wanted to provide that to new members and old, so you had a little background on each of the five criteria. And behind that, you will find the five criteria. And we'll just start out with number one with board discussion, whenever you're ready.
I'll, I'll just make, make my own comment on, on number one. Granting the variance, to me, would be contrary to the public interest. And the reason is that this is, is very much in conflict with our side, side and rear yard setback ordinance. And I mentioned the, the number on that. It's a long number, the 300.002.006.007. It's been in existence for, you know, 40-plus years in Brentwood and seems to be one that is still, an ordinance that's still supported by the vast majority of townspeople and surveys that go out to the citizens.
I would have to agree with that. I, I don't see any reason why the garage can't be moved back. From the pictures I saw that were shown, there's really nothing there that would preclude them from moving it to meet the setback.
And I would have to, I would have to concern, um, agree with that. I just. The house is built with a two-car garage. Now to put a monstrous two-vehicle garage plus and have to have it halfway into the setback is, is, it does nothing for the public good and the public welfare. And it's, there's no explanation for it. The room is there if the garage is that important.
I haven't been sitting at this table for a long time, but like maybe a year, a year and a half. And I've seen this come here before, to the ZBA. It's just at 25 feet. It's, it's a pain. I understand. I, I think it should be more, because I've been in Brentwood a long time and I've built houses in Brentwood. But it isn't. It's, it's 25 feet and you do have a beautiful home, you know, the yard's beautiful, like we said. But I think if you can, you can move it, so I think that's what you should do. Because I've seen people, you know, be declined before.
You know, and once we set a precedent, you know, this again flies in the face of what the townspeople told us. They're our boss. We're, we're, we don't make these judgments on our own. We make them. them based on what the townspeople vote on. And it's not like anybody's gonna vote us out of office, but still, that's our responsibility. We took an oath, all the new members took an oath tonight to abide by the rules and regs of the town and state, and, I mean, it makes, you really feel for applicants all the time. I just don't know how to legally grant you a variance to do what you're asking for. That's, that's simple.
I'm trying to pick out a quick sentence of answering number one. We, we've kind of jumped all around here, so I want to try and bring it down into something concise that, that someone can make a motion on.
You're going back to number one?
Well, we, I need a concise sentence that answers number one, that someone can make a motion on, and you all vote on it.
Well, I'm, you know, you could word it any way you want, I mean, the essential, the bottom line is here.
I don't want to word it any way that I want, I want you to word it.
The actionable words are that, uh, again, the granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest because the applicant has space and room on the property to build a building within the setback requirements. You know, you can, I know I'm always very worried you can shorten that up, but.
But that's, that's, that's pretty good. Is that a motion, Mr. Stevens?
Uh, that's a motion that we, uh.
Oh, that's a motion that I will second.
A motion, Bruce and Doug. Sorry, I have to scribble quickly. All in favor? Did everybody understand the verbiage, number one? I want you, clear you understood the verbiage. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number two reads, the spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed because? For discussion.
So I feel, um, the spirit of ordinance would not be observed if we granted this relief. I think that there's a reason why there's a twenty-five-foot setback, and we should adhere to that.
I'll second that.
One more time. I thought there'd be more discussion, I wasn't scribbling.
So this, I think this, the spirit of the ordinance is to have structures that meet the building setbacks, and where there is an opportunity for this to meet the building setbacks, the spirit of, of the ordinance is not observed.
And there's also the issue of if you do for one, where, where does it stop? And I mean, if there's an overwhelming reason to, to have to go into the setback because of, uh, site, things that were not known about, if there were illnesses, handicapped accessibility was affected, there was a fire, had to do some remodeling, but this, none of that exists.
Uh, so you, I just, as, as Bruce mentioned, too, one of the things, um, being a longtime resident in the town, that this has been in there since seventy-eight, during that time period, there have been numerous changes. Things voted out, things voted in, things voted out, and this one seems to, uh, you know, pardon the cliche, but's been the test of time, and this is one that people have wanted for, for a long time while they've, other things they've just thrown away, so, uh, sorry.
Looks, we gave a motion from Wayne. To have structures that meet the setback providing privacy would not meet the spirit of the ordinance. That's what I got from you. That's right. To have structures that meet the setback providing privacy.
I think what I said was, that the spirit of ordinance is not be observed, I mean, structure can meet the building setback.
Capable of meeting the building setback.
Right.
So can I ask a question?
Of course.
So in these, each number, um, aren't you supposed to deny it by, based on what that article or whatever it's called says, like, the health, safety, morals, prosperity, convenience, general welfare, economy? Like, everything that I typed up in this includes what the RSA says? Aren't you supposed to say, well, it does affect the safety, or it affects the butter, or, like, I feel like you just keep saying the setback for number one, the setback for number two, kind of, just, I'm just being kind of a nerd, but.
I, I think that's, that's the actionable language.
Oh.
That we're, we're speaking to.
Okay.
I mean, the board does take into consideration what you wrote, as well as what butter's right, and we have to just put that all together, kind of mesh the two together, understand that we, we, we haven't in the past voted on each specific, and I know you, you know, recited a number of different reasons why. We're not saying that, that they're all wrong, we're just saying that the overriding principle is our requirement to abide by the law of the town.
Frank seconded it?
I did.
Thank you, that would be my next question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number three, granting the variance would or would not do substantial justice because?
I, I'd say, I would say that it, uh, would not, would not do substantial justice, and the reasoning is pretty much based on what Wayne had, uh, recited for the previous one, that ample space on the property exist to allow the homeowner to build within the side back setbacks required by the town. You know, ample room to do it appropriately.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number four, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties would, would not be diminished.
I believe, uh, the surrounding properties would be diminished because having a structure built, um, closer than the twenty-five-foot setback is, is something that, that a butter would have to look at all the time, and it would be a burden to that neighbor.
I would second that.
Aye.
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 Number five, unnecessary hardship.
I almost think that, you know, under the provisions of RSA six, uh, six seventy-four, that this application doesn't meet the level or the criteria of, of a hardship, period.
I would second that motion.
Aye.
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 I would say, obviously, by the criteria, we probably should do a final vote to either grant or deny the variance. Someone would like to make a motion into that fact?
Make a motion to vote?
Make a motion to deny.
Microphone, Mr. Stevens. Microphone, I'm right up on it.
Go ahead, Frank, I mean, that's.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance.
And I, I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
That's a hard, it's just.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. You'll be receiving a letter of decision via email, I'll make it up tomorrow. I'm gonna send it to you, and it will not be signed, but as soon as Frank can get around to signing it, I will send you a signed copy, okay?
You do know that you have a thirty-day appeal period.
And there is a thirty-day appeal process.
For a couple of weeks, for you?
Interesting. Sometimes it can get a lot more.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. No, thank you.
That is a, that is a tough one. You can pretty much.
Thank you. We do have one more thing on our agenda, where we move on, would be the approval of the meeting minutes of.
Mark and Bruce.
Two twenty-four.
I'm good at abstaining from voting, I spoke at that meeting, I wasn't a board member.
You can vote on meeting minutes as long as you read them.
I did read what you sent us.
You, then you can.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the twenty-fourth of February.
And I will second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you read them, sir?
Uh, I'm embarrassed to say no, sir, I did not.
Then you should abstain.
I'm gonna abstain.
Fair enough.
Oh, I'd just like to ask our new member if there's any questions, uh, I know it's kind of, it seems kind of chaotic and.
I'm, I'm deep briefing right now.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, all right. The book helps a lot.
Yeah, I'm reading.
Can I hear a second? Yes, that's, we've got mark updates every year, and that's the most recent.
You can put that motion on the floor, sir.
I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
That's always been one of my specialties.
I would need a second.
I'd like a second.
So you second that?
I made a dumb one, shouldn't have started.
Wayne said.
Yeah. That's why I wasn't.
Well, nobody was voting on it, everybody just seemed to kind of pass over the.
Well, everybody's asleep.
Doug and, Doug and Wayne.
Chance to go home.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just a question, you mark, so, the planning board must meet once a month, the ZBA.
Hold on, would you, can I turn this off?
Okay, I'll shut up.
You okay?